We've got a couple of just changes on the agenda, nothing substantive but more procedural. We're going to start off with the space needs question, but we're going to move the environmental services update to immediately follow space needs that are related. And then the bond issue and we'll do the strategic planning last. As you all know from previous meetings here, we have interrelated questions with the space needs overall and the bond issue, which is rehabbing a big chunk of our space on West Maple Campus and at Department of Corrections. And I'm glad to see Director Foxall here today. Doctor, thanks for joining us. We want to talk, I think initially, and Jerry, maybe you can lead off, with the space needs question as it relates to the West Maple Campus. We are rehabbing that property and people are going to be moving in there. So where do we stand right now in terms of folks going there?
Well, let me give you the players for the bond issue that will be moving in. They're very successful. 911, of course, is part of the public sector. The environmental services, Kent Holmes Department, will vacate Maple Street and move to that Fitzgerald Home. County Treasurer's Office is a big part of it, so we can eliminate a lease underneath the Maple. The Treasurer's Office will include a drive-through similar to Miller and 50th.
And 50th, Miller also.
The T- kitchen T has one also. And then the last one in, which was discussed a couple of months ago, was Emergency Management, Paul Johnson. So we had one tour with the Registered Aides County Assessor Group, and it was determined at the time that we didn't have the square footage to get them in there. So that's where we're at, really, with space. I mean, we're got some key components that need to go in there. It will be very effective for us to have them all on that campus and at the same time in a building that we own rather than lease.
Okay. I guess one of the big drivers on this, Jerry, is 911. Is there anyone from 911 here today? No.
I think she's out of town.
Just so that we can kind of recap a little bit.
Patrick.
Space-wise, the 911 footprint is how many square feet?
Oh.
I'll look.
And we're going to ask this for each of the four components that you just outlined.
I think this is the one we have last time.
Yeah.
You want to take it?
911 is 11,754. The DMV, 2,027. Environmental Services is 2,498. Emergency Management is about the same. We didn't really cut.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four hundred.
Is that right?
Paul?
Yes.
And let's see, square foot.
That's what we know for sure now.
Correct.
Right. So, using my...
Twenty-three thousand or something.
Okay. Twenty-two thousand out of the total for the facility of what?
Fifty-eighty.
It's probably about twenty-three, so you'd be thirty-five thousand.
Well, if you want to, if we want to get into detail, we got shared space, which is thirty-seven hundred square feet, circulation, mechanic, electrical, engineering.
Kind of common areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Storage.
Basically.
So you'd be down to thirty.
Basically, we have about fifteen thousand left over.
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah. But not all in one area.
How much left over? About thirty-two?
No, sixteen.
Sixteen minus twenty-four, so we don't have that any more.
So you're deducting out the crime lab for...
Well, that's not...
That's not in this calculation?
No.
About thirteen thousand left.
That West Wing is gone. I mean, dedicated, that's it.
Okay.
Not being given as...
So, undedicated in the, in the building as a whole is thirteen thousand.
We only spoke about more or less.
Remaining?
Yes. And as you indicated, that's not all in one spot, right?
Right. And that's why we have difficulty when we toured with the assessor, the Registered Aides, because we kind of ended up, again...
Right, right. Larry, thanks for joining us today. I understand that the Assessor Registered Aid is incapacitated. She has, our heart goes out to her and we hope for speedy return. Give her our best.
What's, is she sick or...?
She's had minor surgery.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. I'm sorry. So we only have thirteen left. We were talking about the assessor's office. We don't have the sixteen thousand, eighteen thousand feet?
No. Right, but I mean, without the assessor here, I don't think it's fair to even go down that thing today. We're just kind of doing an overview for purposes of framing the discussion. We have...
But I'm just...
I, I think you're right. I mean, from what we've heard from those folks, their space need exceeds what appears to be left available.
And that's all I was going to say.
Yeah. So, you know, we're looking at the overall picture from the package point of view. These would be most directly affected by the build-out of the property because they're moving in. The treasurer of these components after 911 is the big dog here. Tim, do you have anything to add from treasurer's point of view?
Nothing's changed since last time. We need, we need definitely the space that's listed here. And then on the garden level, too, we noticed that, but that's included in our total three-hundred-and-sixty-five. That's where the loading dock and plates do, bring plates in and store licensed plates.
Okay. And the property, or the space that you have, the sixty-nine hundred and sixty-two, and the DMV two thousand and twenty-seven, are they together?
They'd be side-by-side. We don't share the same interior wall space, but they're side-by-side.
Just from a kind of a strategic point of view, there's been discussions, and I know that you're aware of, of handing over some things that we currently do to the DMV. If we did that, or if that happened, you know, this isn't happening tomorrow, but just looking down the road, would it be necessary to have them there near you at all?
It wouldn't be necessary if down the road, if that's the option that they do, is to separate from us altogether, then it would not be necessary. It might not be the best service for the residents of the county, but that would be a decision they could make.
So there's, you know, a couple of questions there. We could hand over responsibilities and fiscal responsibilities to DMV to do stuff that we currently do and need for now, but it might still be a convenience to the taxpayer to go to a one-stop shop, right?
Yes, okay.
I think, in my opinion, it would be a disaster to separate that. I mean, every kid that's fifteen or sixteen, they go with their parent to get these permits and licenses, and then you're going to go, they're going to say, go to Elkhorn and get it.
Right, right.
Now, we could lease back to the state if they wished to say.
Right, that's an option. If they have the square footage.
So we could have revenue from the state. Can you imagine that?
That's a good idea.
Now, there will be loss of, loss of revenue from the state if we don't collect the money for it.
Okay.
That's nice. Sound a good trade-off.
We have emergency management with us here today, Paul. You've been out there and looked over the space that's proposed for you. Do you have anything to add to the discussion here today relative to that?
No, the footprint looks, looks appropriate now, but I think that these other departments, the simulation of them is going to work well.
So if we move you from where you are today to this place with an all-brand-new facility, what happens to the space you're currently occupying?
Well, the EOC remains, so Emergency Operations, that's going to remain in the base, but it's just our day-to-day activities administratively will be over there. So we, the space here, we won't occupy that space, it will be out there.
In this building? And how many square feet do you occupy here?
About twenty-four hundred.
That would go back to the building, correct?
If another tenant comes forward, the county still pays the rent until another tenant comes forward.
If...
So much demand by tenants for space these days?
Well, the C-level storage, you know, we're just cramming more and more stuff into there. I would guess in time, we would probably try to turn this into more storage, but I don't know. I was not aware that they were moving up.
Okay. Well, I mean, every time we move one of these pieces, you know, a vacuum occurs from where they were, and so it's important for us to take into consideration those things. Tim, when you move into the new space, where do you move out of?
Hundred and eighths in cotton wood, hundred and eighths in maple. It's called our maple facility, and we would abandon that altogether, which would freeze from lease payment. It would not reduce our footprint here in downtown.
Okay, so this building, there would not be any new space moved up?
Not because of that move, no.
The 911, Jerry, just so that we have consistency in looking at this, when they move out of the Sheriff's Building, what happens to that space if they vacate in the Sheriff's Building?
Well, if we know, there's, and I can't speak to Jenny, but I, what I think I know is that there's a technology piece that will remain over there.
That's my understanding.
And then if there's a little piece left, I think Tom and Tim probably grabbed it. But they also have some similar technology relationships.
We do share some of the computer technology in there. I think they want to keep their infrastructure over there and move the call takers and dispatchers to the new facility.
So they would maintain some presence in your building?
I believe that's what they want to do, yes.
When we come around to this, maybe for next time, just so that we can have an idea on what's left, you know, we're looking at what's, what's left behind when we move out of these places, because we're going to have to do something with that as well. Maybe you could bring us some information on that.
Sure.
The director of 911 might be...
She may be back by the, but I'll make sure I let her know that it's something here.
That'd be great. We have one other player here, and that is the environmental service component. Fortunately, we have Dr. Holmes and on the agenda to give us a service update. So maybe you could join us and as part of that update, give us your component relative to the overall package that we're talking about for the space needs.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Kent Holmes, Environmental Services Director. Basically, we are, are vacating thirty-fifteen Menke Circle, that building that would be available for surplus. We're, I think, originally we were...
Sorry, Kent, just, how many square feet is that facility that you occupy?
Jerry, do you know what the square footage there is? Because it's more, it's more than what we would be moving into as programmed because we don't have shared space. I mean, it's, we have a large conference room and some other space that isn't necessarily going to translate to, to the Fitz.
Five thousand.
Five thousand?
You have five thousand of Menke?
Right.
And that's the entire facility of Menke, right?
Right, that's the entire building. Basically, all of our, all of our office staff, our operations would, would move out there. Actually, I mean, it is a, a very positive move for us because it gets us closer to where most of our business is done. We have, our weed control shop is also now located at one hundred and fifty-six in maple, so it gets more proximity to that. So, I mean, just, it's a good move for us overall. There are significant safety and security concerns at our current facility. We just, it is not set up well for public meetings. We just can't separate the space effectively, and so that, that's one of the major concerns right there. And we'd have shared space for a conference room, but it would be a better setup, physically separated from our office space at Fitz, the way it's currently programmed.
So you have toured the facility and worked with public properties on the build-out for your particular space there, is that right?
In general, I mean, back when it was first programmed. I mean, I haven't, I haven't really revisited since then.
I think he keeps looking at the renderings.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's the, it's that second floor wing area, so.
You know, and we're going to move into this as our next order of business. As we get closer to this bond issue, we have to have much more specificity to what we're asking for in the bond package. And so each one of these discussions, as we push forward, is going to become more and more specific, and each of you are going to be asked for more and more specific questions relative to your piece of this puzzle. So for today's discussions, I mean, we're just kind of trying to get that overview, but I, I want you to know that when we get to May and June at these committee hearings, we're going to be moving down to kind of the, okay, you do have an idea of what your space is going to look like. Tell us about that, you know, and we need to have some idea of what comes in that space that you move out of, and tell us about that. We're relying on, you know, each of the components of this to help us work through what they need and what they see as the, as the next step, so that by June and July, we have an actual package pretty much defined, because we have to sell this to the voters by November, and that doesn't leave us with a heck of a lot of time to, to do that. So just so you know, every month, when you see county space needs and bond issue on the administrative services agenda, expect that you will specifically be called upon to give an update on where you are with your component of this. I would urge you to work closely with Jerry and his office on that, so that each month we can have a little more specific report from each of you on how we go forward. Anything further on your report?
Just, I mean, that, that's the interior space. Did you want me to comment on anything else with that?
Not at this time.
Okay.
We've got limited time here before we have to go to the board meeting. So at some future meeting, and probably after we get through this, it'd be good if we heard your ideas on our policy going forward relative to the landfill and what we're doing with partners in the region on, on waste disposal. I know that you've had discussions with the city and maybe some of the surrounding counties on a little more comprehensive approach to waste disposal on a metropolitan level anyhow, and we'd be interested in that at a future date.
Okay. As part of this committee or community services?
Well, we're certainly interested in, but community services, I think, is a committee of jurisdictions.
Okay.
All right. The strategic planning document that you have in front of you is a product of an initiative that we started last year relative to integrating strategic planning into overall county operations at pretty much an operational level. And I think that many of you were at the initial meeting last, I believe, September at the extension facility, where we got, you know, the ball rolling, we had a facilitator in, everybody had an opportunity at least to put their two-sensor then. And what you see in front of you is some of the work product of that meeting, particularly if you turn to page nine, some of the tactical solutions outlined there were developed at that September 2015 session. So we are now in the implementation phase, and this is kind of where strategic planning falls down a lot. You know, everybody gets together, they have the facilitator in, you get a shiny report and a PowerPoint, and then that goes in a drawer someplace, and five years later, somebody says, hey, we should do some strategic planning. And that's kind of been our experience here. And so in order to maybe take this to the next level, we're going to be talking about this at every administrative services committee meeting, and the board's going to be briefed by Patrick Bloomingdale, I think, in May sometime, coming up, on, on this document. But in the meantime, this is your opportunity to engage in strategic planning for your particular daily work. And we have essentially two big categories of entities here. We have departments who we have more control over administratively, and we have our elected officials who are elected to pretty much run their own shop. And we work together, but we understand that the independence of the elected officials is recognized in statute, and so we are eager to invite your cooperation to participate in the strategic planning. It'll only work if you do cooperate, because some of the most essential services provided by the county are provided by the elected officials' offices, and so we really need your help. But just to walk through this real quickly, and we've got a little bit of time, I wanted to save for discussion on this. If you look at page nine, tactical solutions, the final step of the process resulted in a listing of twelve-month tactical expectations for each strategy. So this is coming out of last fall, and we're about halfway through this twelve-month tactical solution thing. And in the first category, a robust capital improvement program, technology, infrastructure upgrade allowing for some personnel costs decrease, capital improvement program, Thomas Fitzgerald Home renovation and technology plan. You see that, you know, we're actually implementing this through this process on a more or less strategically planned basis. So what we're talking about here isn't unrelated to this document. It's integral to this document, particularly in that first category. We have not yet realized personnel cost decreases because the things that are proposed there have not really been implemented yet. But the technology infrastructure upgrade goes right to what we have in the bond issue in terms of buying new technology for communications at 911, the Sheriff's Office, and I think we're in discussions maybe with other public safety entities in the region to coordinate purchasing communications equipment that can talk to each other.
Corrections also.
Corrections as well.
Part of the bond.
Right. So on that particular point, I don't know if there's any input, particularly from our public safety partners, on where we are with that. I know that there were some talks going on between us and Omaha Police Department, maybe? Both of you shared communications in this package, is that right?
Listen, I don't remember what Jenny said, but I just caught her comment last time.
Fire, a little bit of, yeah, fire and fire. And I, I don't know if we've heard back on the grant.
We haven't heard anything definitive back yet.
Okay. And who's our point person on that discussion? Do we know? Do we have one?
Well, you know, we have, and, you know, it's a, sometimes on the city side, it's, you know, Marty Bealik's talking, sometimes their finance director, Steve Curtis, is talking, sometimes they're talking to me, sometimes they're talking to Patrick, sometimes they're talking to 911. So it's kind of informal, it's fluid.
I know, Joe, from our discussions, that you've been involved with at least preliminary talks with finance people in the city about, if we did this, if we included you in our purchasing this bond issue, how do we get held financially harmless for that outlay of our credit and capital? And would you want to share with us some of the...
Well, basically, our position has been we would buy the equipment upfront, and then they would repay us over eight years. So basically, we buy their equipment, give them an eight-year interest-free loan, and so that's the deal we kind of have on the table to them. And they've come back and said, well, when 911 was set up, nine, the equipment was all purchased, but that, there were circumstances there. I think that you could really argue that was a one-time initial, and so we've told them that that's really probably not going to happen this time. And so they've come back and said, well, let's see how much we can get with grants, and so like I say, we're still going back and forth with them. I would, I would say it's almost a negotiation.
And, you know, from the public safety point of view, I mean, this is an important component that we have all the same technology to talk to, right?
Absolutely, yeah. Police Department's already purchased all of their radios. I mean, we're talking about the 911 infrastructure, their, their equipment, and we're talking about where it goes. So the Police Department has the new radios, we'd be looking to go to those soon. Ours are going to expire, at least the service and maintenance on them is expired.
But they need like a software enhancement, is my understanding, to go to a certain channel to communicate, so that the physical radios are there, but I, it's my understanding they'd have to up, do an upgrade on it to make it completely compatible. That's what I've been told.
There's three or four software upgrades. One of them is this encryption issue that had come up, and the encryption allows us to, to talk securely to one another. If we're not on the same encryption platform and we go to an armed standoff, we can't talk to each other on encrypted channel.
Okay. Anybody else on this one? Again, we'll be, you know, drilling down on these category by category as we get closer because we'll come into the bottom line here, and it'll all tie into that. The capital improvement program for purposes of today's discussion is the Thomas Fitzgerald Home. So these next two are, with today's discussion, kind of the same thing. And the purpose of the strategic planning is, how much is that? I mean, how much is the capital improvement program that involves Thomas Fitzgerald, corrections, the communications equipment? What's the total all-in? And as you recall from two years ago, I think it was PJ thirty-five million for 2014 bond issue?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. We are significantly over that at this point, and working with Joe and trying to get a handle on everybody's numbers, it looks like we might be in the range of, Joe?
Forty-five.
Part of that is inflationary costs. We're doing a lot of the same things. Two years later, stuff costs more. Part of it is we are anticipating things that we didn't anticipate before but are necessary and integral to the process. So... So, just to break it out, of that 45 that we now more or less are, are looking at, Joe, on the bond issue, there is 30 million bond from 2014 included the 911 Environmental Services, Emergency Management, and the Treasurer's Branch. Then two and a half million for replacement of radios for corrections and sheriffs, and seven million for corrections, the old 1976 site, and infrastructure renovation excluding the annex from 1988.
That's only 40 or so.
So that's 40, and we have had discussions that there are additional costs that probably need to be talked about sooner rather than later. And one of them is if we do the redo of the West Maple campus, it sits on a large chunk of property that is currently not the most attractively landscaped piece of land under our jurisdiction. And so, if we were, you know, Northern Natural Gas, or Blue Cross Blue Shield, or Security National Bank, and we were building or renovating a big new property someplace, we wouldn't just do the building, we would landscape the property that the building sits on. You don't do this kind of money into a building and leave it surrounded by a construction site. That's not good management. So, that has led us to some preliminary discussions relative to, in addition to this 40 million that we know pretty much is going to be the cost of the package, what does landscaping the property that we upgrade into a white box on the inside going to cost us? And we don't have a firm number for that, but it's going to be some number. And that may include property immediately adjacent, I think most of us are familiar with the Fitzgerald, it's got a big front yard, basically, that fronts on the Maple Street. I don't know how big, but several acres it looks like to me.
Let, let me throw something out here. Did I have a call into the architect? There were some landscape numbers in that bond issue in 2014, but it's not what, what you may have thought about, entire length from Fitz to Maple. In the meantime, when Jeff and I met with Kent, we talked about the rest of the campus and the landscape. And I think Kent has got a firm on board to assist him with some of the evaluation of the trees that are out there now. Some are in good shape, some are in bad shape. So, it's just a question that Kent coming up with a plan that could be added to this, or at least a number that we can discuss.
And that's, I think, an important thing to...
Yeah, we know this. We know that if it would have passed in 2014, we did Tim Jones' drive-through, and we did our parking lot, because of the city regulations, we would have little islands with trees and shrubs and a very good appearance as you approach. What you and I were talking about a couple of weeks ago was the rest of the campus, and that's where we got Kent and Paul to assist us.
So, you know, we're all on the same page here. We're doing a big investment into a building to bring it up to the 21st century code that we want it to be so that we can use it. That's the interior of the building. I was out yesterday doing some business at One Pacific Place, and there's some beautiful buildings there surrounded by gorgeous landscaping. When they built those buildings, that's Enron, Colley Justin, Security National Bank, they didn't leave the place looking like a construction site. They spent significant resources on landscaping it, and it's gorgeous. The idea here is that we need to do something similar with that, at least for the property immediately adjacent to the Fitz home, or we're shooting ourselves in the foot. You don't build a big new home and, you know, leave a concrete mixture in the front yard. So, we need to, to think about that, but when we're talking about going from what we know is pretty much a $40 million figure to something closer maybe to 45 million, that's part of it. And maybe when we come back in May, Kent, Jerry, you'd have a little more specific number for us. That's one component that's not on the current list, that we would like to talk about next month with more specificity in terms of the cost. An item in the corrections campus that we need to consider going forward, because I don't want to do a bond issue every five years. As a matter of fact, if we never do another bond issue, I wouldn't be upset. So, everything needs to go into this that we can anticipate, that's what strategic planning is all about. We have a property on the corrections campus that we acquired some years ago, the bus station. We have a lease in there, a tenant in there now for some period of time. It's a, is it a tenant at will, or is there a specific...
Month to month. It's, it's Burlington Industries.
Month to month, okay. So, you know, they could give us 30 days' notice and be gone, but it's a valuable property. And what do we do with that valuable property is a question not for today, but something that should be anticipated in this bond issue, so that we have some money set aside for the future development of that valued property. I don't think it's going to be 10 years when they go away. It might be five years, but it could be a month from now legally, if they're on a month-to-month.
30-day notice?
Yeah, either party.
Okay.
So, it might be who us to at least talk about including some funds in the bond issue that would anticipate, I don't know what we would do with that property.
You know what you ought to do, Jerry, Jeff, you ought to talk to them, tell them, hey, just for knowledge, let's put in there a six-month notice by either party, because we know we're not going to have an emergency to do it. And then you'd be at least got time to do your planning and not just have them leave. It's a revenue stream to us, Joe, that's pretty good. I mean, it helps.
That's consistent.
Yeah, we could, we could probably amend that, at least. Yeah, I just talked to him, it's about parties, it's nice to have 90 days or 180. Because of the recent publicity on the bus station, for whatever reason, I did end up talking to the fellow that we worked with before, who was the president of Burlington, and, you know, I just wanted to get, a couple of commissioners had asked me if I've talked to them directly, which I did, and they're having real difficulty locating, re-locating. And if it were up to them, they'd sign a five-year lease, but, I mean, not really, but I mean, they, they like what they've got. There's revenue in Omaha for them, and everything you've heard is just a rumor. They're having difficulty. Dr. Foxall's okay, and John, my thought is, if you talk to them for your convenience, we'd like to change it up to 90 days, either party, and then it's a fair situation, and if you're okay with that mark, John, let's do it. That way, we at least can kind of count on it coming, and it works good, because we'd have to make plans anyway. If they were leaving for 30 days, we wouldn't be doing anything. Well, we can get with Dr. Foxall again, but we also need to, speaking of strategic planning, we need to dust off the master plan that was done at the time of the addition for the area. So there's something there, it's just a question of what's going on with the numbers and the programs that you, you brought into, into play here.
I think it's important to keep in mind, there's several different factors that are impacting the population, the population, right now is up over what it was last year, and that could be anomalous or not. It could be the, the way things are going to be for a while, but, you know, Jerry's right, it's probably, it would be critical to pull that, that plan out sooner than later because my numbers continue to increase. We were 11, 1136, 1140 yesterday, and we exploded over the weekend.
Well, you exploded yesterday too.
Yeah, so, plus, you've got a rising population, I've talked about that, you've got other things that are impacting that legislatively, and also mental illness, and it continues to be the dumping ground for that too. So, if we continue to move that way, we're going to outlive, we're going to outgrow our space. We either talk about that mental health unit, have that discussion, that may relieve some of the pressure, or we begin to think five to 10 years down the road, we have to add some space, add, add one or two more, more housing units. The concern that I have, I spoke to this in previous meetings, is typically have several housing units closed during our lean times of year, population-wise, but we had to open up those housing units, and that pressure at 24/7 on those old housing units continues to wear down those housing units and the infrastructure as well. So, we're talking renovation, we're talking maybe new housing units, we're talking mental health. I don't see the mental health probably going away in time, so, no, that's just, that's, we may as well accept our fate and then try to plan for getting worse as opposed to getting better.
I think that's right on point. I mean, first of all, I want to commend the folks here who had the foresight to acquire that property. And Jerry, I think you led that effort, and that, that was a heads-up move. I think we got it at a good price and...
Took a little heat that we got it.
And will serve us well going forward. But Dr. Foxall makes some good points, you know, we're doing strategic planning, which is think big. So, the great stuff that we are currently doing in terms of mental health, and particularly mental health in the correctional context, could be complemented by the use of that property as an adjunct to correctional mental health needs. I mean, just to brainstorm for a second, if you were taking people, as we do now, in the mental health, or in the correctional facility, and screening them, I think we screen them on admission, don't wait for mental health issues, and, and they present with really severe, you know, needs, we don't really have an efficient place to give them segregated medical attention inside of the current corrections facility. We have to, we have to put them someplace inside the larger correctional facility, and this would possibly allow us, and this is just like I said, brainstorming, a standalone correctional mental health facility that we could staff with appropriate medical personnel to provide some of those services. I don't know, but it's a valuable property, and we should think about what it's going to be in five and 10 years, because we're not in the bus business, and we're not going to be in the bus business long-term, just happens to be that we're there now, so.
And I would say there's potential for mixed use down there with Community Mental Health Center too. So, if we partner in how we operate down there, it may be some opportunity for the Community Mental Health Center as well, because I certainly wouldn't want to operate exclusively of the Community Mental Health Center, because right now we rely on it, or we partner with it for a lot of things to help us with our population.
So, one other thing, I, for Doug, Doug, I don't know if Jeff had passed on, you're Jeff, passed on to you about the corrections piece in this bond, and what Dr. Foxall's talking about. If he's got these spikes in this population, and we've got this infrastructure problem down there, I can't, we can't do it annually with a capital program, because you know our capital budget is that big. So, when we had the discussion, we, it made sense, as Commissioner Kavanaugh said, to, you know, public safety, you know, to put this piece in, because he's going to run into a problem, and we're not going to have the money to repair that infrastructure. So that's, just so you...
Okay, Jerry, thanks. We're running out of time here, so what I would like is, Jerry, maybe you and Dr. Foxall and your folks get together between now and the next meeting and see what that bus station, whatever, component of this bond issue might be. Because I don't want to have to raise property taxes to do something with the bus station because we didn't think about it when we were doing the bond issue, okay? I want to be real clear on that. I don't want to be raising property taxes to be doing stuff that we should be doing in this bond issue. I don't want to raise property taxes to be doing stuff that we should be doing in this bond issue. That's real clear, I hope, to everybody. So, when we're talking in these discussions, put a number on it, bring it here, it may or may not get in, but I don't want to be raising property taxes, let me say again, to be doing stuff that we should be doing in this bond issue. And, so, that's where we're going with these things. By next meeting, hopefully, we would have some numbers on that landscaping question, some numbers on the bus station question. That's strategic planning in practice. And so, if you'll see in that robust capital improvement program portion, we are implementing that through strategic planning. And the front end of that is going to be this bond issue. So that if you flip to page 10, guys, the development and tactical priorities, number one on our 12-month tactical priorities list is the campaign for the bond issue. And we will talk about this some more going forward. I think the finance committee is going to be talking about the particulars of the bond issue going forward. But a couple of things that we need to focus on, the content, which we have total control over, things that we do not want to raise property taxes for that should be in the bond issue, and the promotion of the bond issue, different than it was promoted in 2014. And I think that we should have a discussion here in the next month or two relative to that. That would anticipate a community committee that would partner with us, of community leaders that have an interest in public safety enhancement in this community, that would step forward to advocate on behalf of this bond issue. So, that'll be on our agenda going forward, just so you know. But when we come back next month, I think that each of our partners in the facility at, at Maple Street should be prepared to talk with a little more specificity about what that means to your operations, both going into it and what you've left behind, what you repurpose, what's behind you in. And then we will talk with public property and the affected parties about the additions to the bond issue, because Joe's right, we're now bumping up at 45 million, I think, at least, so. Anybody else have anything to add for the, the good of the order? I appreciate you all coming out at this early hour, thanks a lot, we'll see you next month.